Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good, Jeremy.
How you guys doing? Hi.
Doing good. I got a APL thing just pushed a couple of minutes ago, so it's perfect timing.
Let me see.
So Notebook 1 of the Fast and Numerical Linear Algebra course, but APLified.
Oh, it's not on the forum yet. Where do I find it?
I just posted in the chat here. I literally pushed it like two minutes ago, so I haven't even had a chance to post another form. I just got it done. But I will make a forum post after, after the call.
Very cool.
Okay, so this is about the numerical, well, computational linear algebra course, which we did, oh my god, five years ago? Well, three days short. Nearly five. Oh my gosh, that's amazing.
Started going through it when you mentioned it just, just the other day, and it seems like a great course. I don't know why I didn't do it sooner, so.
Oh, thanks.
Fantastic.
We like to think so. I mean, it's not as like obviously immediately applicable kind of a thing, but you know, it's interesting. So, okay, so you've, so you've taken the first notebook from it. And
And like
Here we go. Ah. APL, look at that.
Get those two, two ones, and then I calculate the, the answer using our matrix multiplication.
Oh, nice. Nice. I see, this is like a little just empty thing to fill in the space, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how to make tables look, look good in APL. That's what I came up with. It was concatenating stuff together, but One more section. A couple more sections here, so. I got to learn a bunch of new glyphs doing this.
Cool. Nice using the power operator. I'm glad we did that. Very timely. And, oh, a little bit more.
And
Oh, look at this, eigenvalues, my goodness.
I didn't know how to calculate them a smart way, but I got them calculated, and hopefully I'll learn a smarter way later in the course.
All right, great.
That's, I think that's the last of it.
This is my favorite Bloom filter joke. It's also the only one I know. It's a good one. Nice job, Isaac. That's cool.
Oh, thank you.
It's not gonna get any easier.
Well, I mean, in, in theory, this should be exactly what APL is good at, right?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the bits where you have to start like opening JPEGs and stuff might get complicated, but
Oh, yeah, I, I spent some time trying to figure out how to open images and it, it's um don't have a super easy way of doing it as far as I could tell, so I'll have to take another stab at that later.
And then Molly's posted something. You can talk, Molly, you don't have to put stuff in the chat. We like hearing from people.
Oh, no, the conversation was already going, so I was waiting for it to be over.
Thanks. Tell us about this. What have you got here?
Uh, yeah, so a few videos ago, Euler's formula was talked about just a bit, and Euler's identity. Um, yeah, the Khan Academy one shows like the power series of the power, sorry. McClure, McCludian? I forget.
McCorn series? Is that like a Taylor series? Oh, yeah, I guess it must be like a Taylor series.
Yeah, like a Taylor series. Um, it shows it for sine, cosine, and e, and then inserts i into the one for the exponential.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, that one inserts i into it and shows how it's a combination of the side. Uh, the sine and cosine with an i in it. Yeah.
Thanks for the tip.
And then you can split, and then it shows how you can split them up into uh, the one for sine and cosine, and how it ends up looking like, uh. Yeah, your, uh, Euler's formula.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else that's come up?
I was just gonna say, Jeremy, I, I listened to some more of the Array podcast content.
The Arraycast? Or you made my particular one, or just?
No, no, I listened to yours too, which was great, but the, but the other content that got there, it, what shocked me was that how deeply embedded APL is in Wall Street.
Yes.
That, that's amazing. I didn't realize that that was such a long legacy there with trading. That was very cool.
Yeah, I mean, mainly nowadays, it's K and KDB. Which I think most of the big sense hedge fund trading folks use. But that itself came from A+, which Arthur Whitney built at Morgan Stanley, and I discovered the other day that it actually exists as an open source thing nowadays. Not exactly regularly maintained, but yeah, historical interest.
Yeah, there was some, I can't remember who was the interview, they were talking about one of the reasons that the APL community is a bit cloistered, as you said last time, is that a lot of them didn't open source their implementations. It was really built around proprietary applications, and so that, that limited the, the exposure, which is really interesting compared to something like Python, that's kind of done the opposite.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, it's also interesting how like proprietary trading shops like you know, secrecy is so important to them, but also like they don't care about following cultural kind of trends, and so they do tend to like pick things that are good regardless of whether they're popular, so like Jane Street, for example, uses Okamal, and yeah, Morgan Stanley had A+, and lots of them use APL. Yeah, it is, it is interesting. I know a lot of them have been moving towards using more Python in recent years, though. Which I think, you know, partly that might be because Python is much better for working with accelerators. Um, this one with Aaron was like one of my favorite episodes, if you haven't seen it. And then this one with Brooke was interesting. It doesn't actually talk about APL that much, but just like
Yours.
Oh, I'm not showing my screen.
And I figured it out. You're doing this, so did you get us to talk?
Haha. Whatever works. Great. Oh, so that means that whole discussion about, uh, where are we guys? What's in the chat? Yes. Isaac's thing, you didn't actually see it.
No, we, we saw that.
You saw that? Oh, when did I stop sharing the screen? I don't even remember pressing the stop sharing screen button. Okay. Fine. Um, yeah, okay, so this is K. Um, and this is A+. And this is this, yeah, public, the available implementation. And, uh, yeah, this is the one with Aaron, who built a GPU compiler in APL. And yeah, this one with Brooke I thought was cool. Um, which other ones are good? There's also one with Eric Iverson, which was good. Yeah, this one is good. It's a kind of a weird podcast, because the first few episodes kind of like assume you don't know anything about array programming. It's just like, why would you be listening to an array programming podcast if you didn't know anything about array programming?
They've kind of got a captive audience already, so.
Yeah, anyway, I felt like about the point where they talked to Eric and talked about tacit programming was where it started getting interesting. I think.
Yeah, I didn't know about it until, until you mentioned you were going on, so thanks for telling us.
All right. No worries. Uh, okay, should we do some calculus then? We'll keep going with some calculus. Yeah, so this is where we got to yesterday, right? We were doing rise over run. The slope. So this is a numerical approximation of a derivative. And it's an approximation, because like the smaller you get this, the closer you get to the slope at this exact point, but it's never, you know, quite short enough to be perfect. Um, so yeah, I thought it'd be nice if we could create something that would calculate this for any function. Which we can do, and the way you do it is by creating a custom operator. Um, so we could create something called gradient. And we could kind of copy and paste all this. And let's say we put x on the left, so that'll be our alpha. And our difference will be on the right, so that'll be our omega. Okay, so that's gonna be a gradient of a particular function, right? So the gradient of f um, at at three, or whatever, at x, which is three. Oh, that's right, at three, with a difference of 0.01. Oh, I've gotta run everything. Didn't know I'd restarted my notebook. I'm surprised how long it takes to run. Actually. Okay, it's happening. Finally. There it comes. There we go. Okay, um. So that number is the same as that number. So the thing is, we want to replace f with um, oh, and let's simplify this. We don't need these parentheses, right? Because plus happens first. There we go. So in order to pass in a function, we can turn this into an operator. And so if you look at the help for an operator like star diuresis. You've got up to five things around it. You've got the two arguments of the function it creates. And one or two arguments of the functions that you pass to the operator. So there's five things. So if you want to create a custom operator, this thing's gonna be omega. This thing's gonna be alpha, and then there's two more things. This thing's gonna be called omega omega, and this thing's gonna be called alpha alpha. So if we replace f with double alpha. We've now created an operator. And so that means we now have to tell it what function to take the derivative of. Oh, omega omega. So I'm gonna put it on the right. Okay, what did I do wrong? I'm not aware of needing to put it in parentheses, but whoops, what did I do wrong?
Um, why you still keep the f?
Why, why is there a f here?
Yeah.
Because I gotta say, what, what am I taking the gradient of? So I'm taking the gradient of this function. So that's the thing that omega, omega's gonna be replaced with.
So this is kind of where I find the, the quad operator really nice, because right in the function, you can add your print statements to you know, so like take that first, that alpha that it's pointing at, and
Yeah.
assign that to the quad operator in the function, and then it'll print out whatever's there, hopefully.
Okay.
Because that should run before most everything else.
Okay.
So it should print that before it fails.
That didn't work. All right, let's try making something simpler. We're gonna create an operator which just calls the function. Okay, so there's the world's dumbest operator. So we should be able to go G of plus, which would be plus, apply that to two. Huh. Okay. G plus. All right, so that did not work how I expected. Does it need to be alpha, alpha? The other way around. So normally you do like plus slash, so it goes on the right. I don't think this is right. Nope. Nope, okay. So maybe if we search for this. I haven't normally found their search very useful, but let's give it a try. Tops, yes. Stop. Ah, okay, so it does expect to have just alpha, alpha, if it's monadic. So that means oh, it goes, I think, the opposite way around to the way I expected. All right, so let's change this to alpha, alpha. And that would mean I think it's plus g. Ah, okay. So
I guess that makes sense. Other operators work that way, like plus slash and
Oh, of course they do.
No, so I hadn't thought about that.
Jeremy, you're idiot. All right. Yes. Yeah, somehow I had it backwards in my head. Okay, all that, fine. By the way, Isaac, for your flashcards, it occurred to me that a lot of these things don't really make sense as flashcards. Um, and for those, like, it occurred to me that something that might be useful is if you added tags to the ones that you want to be exported as cards. Then you could go through in your script and just add cards for those that have like a card tag on it or something like that. That would be a way to avoid having lots of crap you don't need.
Yeah, I quickly learned the shortcut to suspend a card, but that would probably be a better way to do it, to not have it generated in the first place.
Yeah. Okay, um. Great. Yeah, so it's a bit, I don't know, it's a bit weird in some ways, but I guess it kind of makes sense that this is how you create an operator. So this is a monadic operator, because it only has alpha, alpha. It doesn't have omega, omega. And it's a monadic operator that creates a dyadic function. Because it's got an alpha and an omega, and so I don't think we actually need the parentheses anymore. No, we don't, because operators bind more tightly, so it's as if this is parenthesized. Does that make sense?
So a monadic operator takes stuff from the left.
If you give it an alpha, alpha, it would take stuff on the left. I mean, I assume we could go omega, omega, although as Isaac said, that's not quite what you would expect, given how other ones work. Let's see if it works. No, you can't. Okay, so yeah, it goes on the left if you say alpha, alpha, and if it's on the left and the right, then you would do, you would do both. Okay, so that's our custom derivative. And that's a numeric approximation of a derivative, to be more precise. All right, so ah, okay, we've got a whole list of our operators here. Wait, so left arrow is considered an operator? Has anybody figured out what the curly brackets means yet, by the way? I haven't. Um, I'll tell you an operator I'd quite like to do is this one, tilde diuresis.
Think that could save a parenthesis than the one we just did.
Correct. Uh, tilde. Yeah. Tilde diuresis, okay, which is a monadic operator, so it's gonna take one function on its left, and it produces a dyadic function. Hence, there's the one function on its left, and that's results in the dyadic function. Um, it's got a bit of a strange name, commute. Um, but all it does is it takes x and y, and it returns a function that actually calls y f x rather than it uh, rather than x f y. So, um, if we do um, okay, what's the letter for that? Yeah. Shift t. And it's called tilde diuresis. Monadic, shift t, dyadic. If t, oh, there is no monadic. Okay, um. So then there's commute. And you could say, yeah, three minus two is that, so that would be um, putting x on the left and y on the right, so it's three minus two, but if we do it the other way around, two minus three. We could also write like this, two minus, sorry, three minus. Um, what was the letter again? t? Yep, and then commute means switch the order of the arguments. Does that make sense? So it just flips them around. Oh, just one moment, I don't want to be Sorry, we had a missing computer problem.
So I already found a link for, um, brackets. The curly braces.
Great, let's take a look. I thought they might be optional arguments, but it didn't make sense for results, so it can indicate shy results. And did you find out what a shy result is? And did you find out what a shy result is?
Oh.
No.
I've heard that word before. A P L shy result. Ah, okay. By default, functions print their result unless they're shy. There you go. Okay, so that's an optional argument. And that's a shy result. Great.
How do you define a shy result in a function?
No idea. Okay. So this is a dyadic tilde diuresis, and so we can now redefine gradient. Like so. So because the right-hand side is handled first, we can now say, and I find it's really helpful to like, find a way to say this, which is I would say omega divided into the right-hand side. Um, so I wouldn't say divide commute. I would say divided into, like, normally there's some way you can, like, express the idea of these things being backwards in a reasonable math or English expression. So that does make it a bit more clean, which is nice. And then there was another version of commute of tilted iris, which is constant. And so constant just always returns its argument. So we could create a function called zero. Zero. And so this, this is a function. And so we can apply it to anything we like. And I believe we could even do it dyadically. So that's just a function that returns zero. And that's it for tilde diuresis. Um, this form I see a lot. People use it very frequently in APL.
Jeremy, when are they using it?
They use it for exactly this kind of purpose.
Okay.
APLers hate parentheses. And they hate unnecessary symbols. Which I kind of get, like, it's this is certainly, by having less stuff to read, it's, I find it easier to read. You know, the other one I think we might want to do? Is h, which one of these is h? Does anybody remember? Is it this one? Yeah, this one. Okay, so this is just diuresis. Um, and here it is. One. Diuresis. Monadic. And it's a monadic operator. Oh, this word here means can be either monadic or dyadic. It's not ambivalent, as in I don't care, but it's ambivalent, as in either valence. Where valence is handedness. Yes, this is. Okay. This is a list of. Oops. Okay, this is a list, this is an array of arrays. So it's an array with two elements. And if we try to do plus slash of that, um, it's going to get upset because it's trying to do, it's trying to insert plus between its arguments, which would be the same as typing one, two, three, four, plus five, six, seven. Um. The, uh, each operator takes the previous function, which in this case is itself being defined with an operator, and it means sum. And it applies it over each of its arguments. So plus slash each means apply plus slash to this, and then apply plus slash to this. Thus giving us the results 10 and 18. Does that make sense? And I think that might work for, like, um, let's create an array by matrix. Uh, which is a two rows by three column array, iota six.
The rows going to go between them.
Diadic form of row. Thank you. Okay. Um. So if I try to do two, three, plus mat, something like that can work in NumPy. It would broadcast the maybe like this, it would broadcast this over each row. But it doesn't, and it also, I think, can work in J, but I don't think by default it works in APL. But I think if we say that it applies to each element of mat. Or is it applied to each column? Hmm. Something like that. I think the problem is that it's going through each of two. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, yeah, I think the problem is it's going through each of two, three, four separately. Um. What does this look like? Plus slash? Ah, okay, it's, it doesn't actually work that way correctly on a, on a matrix. So to play.
And I think this is, this might be related to when we were looking at the iota before, where we were um, searching for, um, using it to find values in the, in the matrix. It was, uh, you wouldn't find individual values, you'd find whole rows at a time.
Yeah, I think the issue is it's not going over cells of an array, but going over items. So I'm guessing if we did kind of more like this. Um. Then we might better do like. Oh, not that, B. Okay, yeah, so that's going to go over each of these. It's going to go, it's going to go two plus this, and then it'll go three plus this. And I assume there must be some way to make that apply over a rank two array, but I don't know what it is. So I guess if anybody fingers that out, let us know. Otherwise, I guess we'll probably come to it at some point.
I put the syntax for defining a shy function in the chat.
Oh, okay.
And wanted to disrupt your flow, but.
No, no, it's all good. Shy, this is not shy. Let me copy them. I don't really have much of a flow, I've got to be honest. Uh, oh, it didn't work.
It seems like you're on a roll to me.
Uh, copy. List. That's all I could. Okay. So I'm going to guess this one is shy, is it?
Yep.
And this one's not shy. So when you actually assign it to the function, that makes it not print out.
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks.
Yep. Not sure when I would want things not to print out, but.
Okay, so none of their examples are using matrices. Um, the only other place it could be helpful to look at is to look at the APL wiki. It's only defined in nested APLs. I think that means things where you can have an array in an array. Okay, I don't know what any of that means.
Here, if we can search, I'm trying to search APL cart. That would be nice if you can search for symbols.
So I assume there's going to be some magic incantation that basically turns a matrix into an array of arrays of rows, and that you could do it, do it that way, I assume. Okay.
So you can search for a, an APL symbol on APL cart, and it will give you everything that's in. Um, I don't know how, how old most of them are to me, but.
I mean, now's not a bad idea to learn how to use this thing, because when I was on the podcast, they seemed to think it was a thing worth learning about. Okay, there it is. H. Now, how do I? I see. So typing comma h ensures all elements vectors, join items. I see, these are like idioms, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, like one that I found, I was, when I was working on this computational algorithm, you can type in like, calculate the determinant, and they've got a big long thing for that. Um, and so some of them. I think for most of them, um, the ones at the top seem to be more simpler than the ones down below. They are sorted. Um, and actually, this, this table's, it lives in a, um, text file in a GitHub repository.
Here is Conway's game of life. That's great.
I'm going to be really happy when I can read all this.
Yeah, this is intense. That's cool. I only see one thing that mentions a matrix.
Can you try adding matrix to the search?
I can.
That works too.
Pept to diagonal matrices.
And I believe there are, it does have additional, um, tags and stuff that's not shown here to help with the searching. Um. I don't know how good they are.
Non-diagonal matrix of shape of matrix. So if I copy this, and saying at the top that what each thing is, M is a matrix, and capital N is a numeric array. Oh, so it's saying it's a numeric array, which is a matrix, I guess. So I guess that means in theory we could type mat here. We can. Okay. Um. This is. Okay, this is the h which is flipped. Uh, okay, I'm going to try and do this just now. All right. I see slash bar and slope bar a lot. I didn't know this is called slope. I always call it backslash. And I have no idea what they are. So maybe we should learn. It's, as an operator, it's a monadic operator. And we type it. Oh, with the slash, makes sense. Slash bar. And this is called replicate first. No, it's called reduce first. Reduce first. Oh, my daughter wants me again, sorry. All right.
So if you do the sum plus slash in a matrix, um, versus this one, one will sum column-wise and one will sum row-wise.
Okay. Cool. Um. I'm glad we had a matrix ready to go then. Okay, and is that literally all it does? This is, okay. This is, okay. So in J, J has a rank operator, which is actually the double quote sign, where basically you can just always say what axis you want to use. So that would be reduce over, uh, over the zero axis and that would be reduce over the one axis. But I'm not sure if you can do anything quite the same. There is a thing called rank. Maybe we should see how this is different. Uh, so that's this one here. Which is called jot diuresis, I assume. J. Help. J. Shift J. Classic edition. It doesn't have the same like usual information. Anyway, it's called rank. I already forgotten what letter I said. J. I guess this is called jot diuresis, but I didn't see a thing for it. Monatic. Rank. And if I say do it over this axis. Well, that sure didn't work. Oh. That might need this. Hey, look, it is the same. So wait, no, that's the same as sum. And what if we put a zero? Two. No, okay. I don't know what I'm doing. All right, let's come back to that one and make sure we, okay, so it sounds like slash bar, there's not much to learn, which is it's just the same as slash. But it does it over a different axis. Uh, which I assume is going to be the same for backslash bar. Except they didn't call it backslash. They called it slope. And that's probably going to be backtick backslash, I'm guessing. Nope, it's not. All right.
Okay, so we can, we can specify the axis of plus slash.
Yep.
By adding like bracket one, but right after the operator. I believe. And then bracket.
Like that?
Um, no, square brackets immediately after the operator. So it's, yeah, just like that.
Okay, so does that apply for like? Does that apply for like everything? Or is that just this particular? I feel like I've seen that mentioned in the docs.
Yeah, it's called a function access.
Just like to all operators, can you put it on all functions or?
I think it's all functions.
Okay, so why on earth do we need? Slash bar. Access. Access.
This is what I was looking at here.
F must be a monatic primitive mixed function taken from these. Or a function. Okay, no, it can't apply to many things. It's just slash or slope or these. I wonder why.
There's a bunch of.
And then you've also got access with dyadic operator. It must be a dyadic primitive scalar function. Oh, well, that's good. So any dyadic scalar function, primitive scalar function. Or a mixed function, which I assume means one with an operator where they've used one of these. Okay, so it actually does sound like you can do a lot of things with it. That's good news.
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a wiki I put on the, in the chat about the function access specifically. It kind of covers both. I think it's kind of a combination of these two.
Okay, cool. I see a few other people have mentioned in the chat, by the way, is anything we wanted to talk about or ask about? If anybody wants to speak up. Function access.
Uh, mine was, was not specifically related to the content we were discussing, so didn't want to bring it up.
Oh, no, please do. We're so like not at all focused, Molly, as you'll see. This is just a like, yeah, hanging out, chatting about whatever seems interesting. And all this formula is definitely interesting.
Oh, yeah. So I came first. I first gave my cross dealers formula in a paper that I was reading on positional embeddings.
Uh huh.
Um, so I had no idea what it was. I actually used this to figure out the fundamentals I was missing.
Oh, wow.
Uh, yeah, it was rotational positional embedding. That's what it was called.
Okay. So for those of you who are interested in transformer models, there's like literally no sense of like the order of things in a vector. And so it's like literally impossible for it to learn anything that requires order and language is ordered. So we use these things called positional embeddings. Is it this rotary position?
A rotary positional embedding. So it's been a while. Yes, that's it. And then there is a proof. Yeah, this was the actual proof I was going through, trying to figure out what they were talking about.
All right.
Um, yeah. And then I was missing a lot of the fundamentals. So I just go down to where they're doing the actual proof. And then you can just click on the very, whatever you do not understand, like the proof or what you don't understand. So if you don't understand complex cosine, like how they're able to get the complex cosine function.
And it's not like infinite, you don't find yourself clicking until you come back to where you started.
Uh, somewhat that can happen. Um. But yeah. And then I just start looking up the various things they're talking about here until I understand it. So.
Okay, that's cool.
It's just one way I was able to understand papers, like the math behind papers and stuff. So.
Thanks. That's great. All right. Well, I reckon we might stop now and probably talk about axis next time. Axis. Uh, something's going to be there. I'll just put a number. We can do that next time. That's going to be super handy. All right. Thanks, everybody. See you next time. Bye.
Yeah, have a good one. Bye.